Just name, amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, this Eastern County Commissioners Court is officially in session and we have a quorum. We have Mr. Graham with Conley and Company to present the 2022 audit report that we were so desperate to hear from last time that we were here.
You're making him feel bad.
Yeah, well, I need to make you feel bad if he's charging us that much. Mr. Conley, come on up. Yes, sir.
Yeah, I apologize. Court, the judge, Loretta, and I haven't done that before, but I had the wrong day. And I called the Loretta later that day and said, hey, you ready for tomorrow morning? She said, no, that was this morning. I said, I apologize.
Well, you weren't the only one that didn't show up.
Yeah, one of them days. Hadn't done that before, so not a first I wanted to have, but. Well, the weather's been, well, we'll see. It's fixing to be hotter again on this day. The rain's been scattered, y'all haven't got quite as much as we've gotten down the road. It's kind of, it's just kind of strange, we usually don't get as much as you guys get. Is that it?
Thank you, yes.
Oh, thank y'all for having me. Oh, we've got lots of data and I really like to just start at the graph level and go from there. And if y'all want to get into more detail, we'll be glad to stop back up and get into some of that. But you've had a, you, you, a few, a few new standards that have come out too. One relates to leases, so that was, that was a big change for most counties. Basically, before, when you had a lease, for instance, like a copier lease, you basically had just a disclosure. But now you book the lease as an asset and a corresponding liability. It's kind of, kind of strange where it zeros out, but just a new accounting standard. So we actually booked, I think you had 13 copiers and spectrum was a phone, I think the phone lease. So we basically had to book those on the asset side and liability side. Again, it, it kind of washes, so it's, it's more of an entry for us, to be honest with you. Uh, and the other change was basically on your agency funds. I think, I think prior, you basically had, uh, just employer retirement fund, which is a deferred comp plan. But now any agency type accounts that you have, we basically book. So you'll have an asset and a corresponding liability. Again, those, those custodial funds, it does not result in any net expense or income to the, to the county. So we just have to flow it through gross. So those were the two main, I guess, accounting changes. The one standard coming up that will affect you next time around, they're looking at all, you know, a lot of, a lot of folks think about, have these leases where you're leasing, um, software. So they're going back and, so we'll have to go back and look at any software type or lease, or leases that y'all have and then possibly book that too. And it'll be the same situation, it won't be an asset and liability. So that's the next piece of the, the lease standard they're trying to make everybody do. Uh, as far as just the graphs, I don't have these numbers, so I'll just go through each one. And if y'all say, where the heck's this guy at, y'all stop me and, and we'll, I'll be glad to back up. Uh, one thing too, you had, you had a single audit again this year. So you have a single audit, every, anytime you have federal funds, federal expenditures over $750,000, you have a single audit. Last year it's FEMA, uh, FEMA funds, you had, you've had those, that was multi-year project. And it seems like you had flooding about the time you fixed, you had more flooding and, and we had, you know, lots of, lots of FEMA funds that, that flowed through. This year, I think the community block grant, 750,000, I think that's for dam, dam, dam repairs. And then the other big piece was, of course, from the, the ARPA or the coronavirus relief fund. Uh, that this year was about a million six that was expensed. Uh, and that, that affected a lot of things. So we'll, as we go through these numbers, you'll see that kind of coming back in multiple occasions. But the first graph is the audit opinion and without going into reading it all for y'all, it's the, it's a clean opinion, so y'all, I mean, y'all, y'all do a good job. Loretta does a good job and everybody, your whole staff does a good job. It's, it's, it's clean, we know what's going on. It's like we have the same entries every year. Predominantly what we book are, is the pension plan, OPEB, fixed assets, uh, and maybe a few entries related to the grants. The, the more standard stuff we're used to, uh, making the entries for, we make them for most counties, so it's not unusual. Again, a clean opinion, everything is in accordance with GAAP, uh, did not, not have any exceptions. Uh, and the next, the next graph, report sections, just kind of gives you an idea of the layout of the 74 pages of the other audit report. Uh, we'll talk a lot about government-wide, and I think we've talked about that before. But when, when we talk about government-wide financials, that's more like a typical business. So all your fixed assets are capitalized on that government-wide side. All your debt is actually debt, it's a no payable. So it's more like a standard business when we talk that government-wide. Uh, fund financials is probably what y'all are used to, more cash in, cash out, going to follow that budget y'all set up. So we'll talk about that a little bit. The rest of these are all required supplemental or supplemental schedules. You've got a couple pension schedules, OPEB. Uh, and then the back part, starting really at page 69, is where the single audit kicks in. The next graph is, the next graph is, again, this is government-wide, so we're looking at all the county's assets, any fixed assets that have been booked, any notes payable. Uh, in this case, the only debt you have really, you have, uh, you have a motor grader, three motor graders, I believe, the phone, and then the rest of these copiers that we booked. So you don't have a lot, it actually increased to about $26,000. That's because we had to make this one entry, so it did not really, you didn't, didn't have any new debt. We just had to book that asset and liability and that, so that's really the change there. But as far as your assets, you can see your assets went from 15.6 million to 18.2. So it's a pretty, pretty nice increase on the asset side. And the most unusual thing that we're seeing in, in really most of the governments is you had a pension asset. And so that's pretty unusual. Last, last year you had a pension liability of about $2 million. So this year that, you have a pension asset of a little over a million. So it's quite a, quite a change and you have to think about, well, the actuary is actually always a year behind. So that actuary is looking at 123121. And if, and if you compare, I'm just going to warn you, if you compare the market from then to now, it's about, it's about 21% down between 93022 and 123121. So I expect that to shift some next time. Uh, but if you look at the net effect of everything, because you have these deferred inflows and outflows that actuary books too, requires us to book, and that's basically saying, hey, if I missed the expected investment return on this, we're going to book a deferred inflow or outflow. And so it goes into your financials over the years. But your net effect was about a million dollars in improvement from the last year. And that affects a lot of stuff too, as we get into some of that. Cash was up nearly $2 million, cash is right at $8 million, uh, which is pretty good position. A lot of that is ARPA funds, uh, a lot of the cause was ARPA funds. The investments were down, I think, seven, about 750,000, which was a CD that was used for other ARPA fund expenditures that you had. And the other change really was your, your property plant equipment. I think about a million dollars of ARPA funds were used to buy some property, um, R, RSM, RMS software. If I'm saying that right, at the jail, it was about 375. Then you bought some heavy equipment, um, I think three Tahos, a couple motor graders, uh, a couple F-250s and one F-350 maybe and a trailer. So you had about a million of that was ARPA. So how that affects your financials too, we'll go into some of that in a minute, but you'll see that effect as well. What was really down were your deferred outflows, which again relates to the pensions. So when you see this stuff, you're like, we don't know how to calculate either. All this comes from the actuary, so as they, as they miss things each year or, or, you know, you have these deferred inflows and outflows. As far as liabilities, liabilities went up about $898,000. Part of that, part of that is in payables, I think, once the conversion over to net data has been, been more challenging, I think. And I think we're getting there, but, uh, again, a lot of it was in payables. Your pension liability was down $2 million bucks, we talked about that. Uh, the big change was deferred inflows, again, relates to these pensions. So you've got, I think, over $2 million in these deferred inflows. Now, what, what happens is that deferred inflow will go into income over the next five years. So that'll help offset that pension liability next year. So, you know, once we get to next year, we'll talk about the net change again. So it's, it's really complex, all these kind of flow, but, uh, anyway, really, really strong year in your asset piece. And cash is in good position, $8 million, so I think you have a defer, I think your unearned revenue is about a million, uh, $1,000,009, and a lot of that relates to the rest of the ARPA funds that you've got still to spend. Okay, and the next graph is your net position. Again, this is government-wide, uh, pretty good, you know, net position of 10.9 million, nearly $11 million. Of course, that's the highest it's been in the last five years. Now, that will decrease probably as you start depreciating these assets that you put on the books this year, these capital assets, so we'll kind of see how that flows. The next graph is a net position by category. It's really half and half, half of your net, net position is in your capital assets and the other half is unrestricted. But, you know, pretty, pretty good position with 5.4 million unrestricted. And that investment in capital assets is basically, if you took all your capital assets, less any debt related to those capital assets, that's how you get back to that 5.4 million number. And the next graph is your change in net assets. Now that, again, the best you've had in five years by far. I mean, it was really, a, a really strong year on the, on the government-wide side. Part of that was the pension we just talked about, that was about $900,000 that, that you, you benefited from here, with the pension changes. Property taxes went up about 200, but I think about 100 of that was delinquent property taxes that were, were paid more than last year, so that helped. Uh, and also grants were up about $1.2 million. And if you think about, we just talked about, a million dollars of those ARPA funds were used, uh, for fixed assets. So they don't really go in as an expense here because they get, they're capitalized and they're depreciated. So again, you benefit from that if those funds are used on capital funds. So good, a strong year again for, for your change in net assets. Uh, the next graph is, this, this really is looking at, okay, let's take all your revenues, your fees, your grants and everything, take out your expenditures, and then what's, what's funded really by, really by the taxpayers? I mean, what you get down to is, is, is 7.2 million was, was, was funded through property taxes and other, other avenues that you had. But that improved quite a bit from last year. You can see that improved about a million six. Uh, again, that was because you had such a strong net income on that government-wide side. Our next graph is general revenues by type. You can see it, uh, obviously the biggest, the biggest general revenue is going, always going to be that property tax and other taxes. Went up slightly, uh, fines and forfeitures also went up a little, uh, and a lot of that was forfeitures. And the other, the other, we had actually more of a gain, I think, than we typically would have. I think you had the 400 convenience way conversion or the exchange. And then I think we had a, a barn in Gorman that, that was never booked, I think, that we never had, it's probably been there for a while, that was sold, so all that was a gain as well. I think you had about $160,000 in gain that you don't, you wouldn't typically have on sales and conversion, et cetera. Uh, but overall, you know, good, good position on general revenues. Uh, next, the next graph is fund balance. Now, this is, this is more typical what you're looking at with your budget and everything else. Again, you're in a good position on the fund balance, you're still north of $6 million, so that's good, good, good position. It's at least 80% of your expenditures, you think about it that way, you know, it's in pretty good, pretty good shape. It was down about $145,000 and, and really, so that relates back to things that, that, uh, one, I think you had to buy some boating equipment, that's about $112,000, I think, is. And I think you had maybe one salary that wasn't budgeted that, you know, and then also TRS went up as far as the percentage that you had to pay. I think it went up nearly a full percent as far as that retirement piece. So that was, everything else is pretty much in line, you know? So, so really what you're looking at on that fund balance side is generally going to come out pretty, pretty, pretty even, pretty flat.
You said there was, somebody's salary wasn't on there, who was?
Oh, I think, I think there's one deputy maybe that wasn't budgeted. Uh, I think that was it, everybody else was merit raises and that type of stuff.
Okay.
I'd say from the original budget, I guess, is what I'd say, if that makes sense. Uh, the next graph is just fund balance by type. You know, most of your fund balance is going to be in your general fund. Uh, that, that 13 shouldn't have brackets on it, out there in the middle, so I don't know how I got brackets on it, but that's, that's positive. But your general, Roden Bridge are usually your majority of that, you know, fund balance, which makes sense. Then your other non-majors, it's going to be everything from your juvenile adult, you know, fund, everything else that, that's going to flow through in that other non-major. Uh, your major funds are your general fund, Roden Bridge, and then I think the ARPA was actually a, a major fund this year. That all depends on percentage of assets or percentage of expenditures, and that creates that general fund or a major fund. Uh, and then the next graph is relates to audit findings, which there were none, and that's, so this deals with in, on the governmental side, if you had any, if you had any findings that we would like to, uh, control deficiencies, et cetera. And it also relates, we did not have any single audit findings, so everything there was, was in order. Um, we do a lot of testing on the single audit, that's, and, uh, you know, we haven't seen the, the, the federal government do much testing on, of our entities yet, so we'll see. I think that's probably coming on some of these, uh, coronavirus-type funds, so, but again, we didn't have any findings. The ARPA funds were, were, that was our top A funds, um, that was about a million six. So we looked at probably well over 50% of your federal expenditures. And then next year, we'll see what, what else you have, but that will most likely be the major fund again, uh, will be those ARPA funds, so. Uh, but again, clean, no problems there. The next, the next graph is required communications. And this is actually the, the smaller report that y'all have, that this kind of summarizes a lot of this. Uh, there was, you know, we talked about the new standards, uh, we really didn't have anything unusual or alternative type accounting or, or anything that was out of line. And your accounting estimates, uh, you know, basically you've got the PP&amp;E as an estimate, you've got AR as somewhat of an estimate, you know, what, what's collectible on the property tax side. Talked about the adjustments a little bit, um, really no disagreements, um, or difficulties, so. Again, it's very, very clean year, I think that was the last new standard. We talked about GASB 87, that's the new lease standard. So that was, that was really the majority of it, I'll be glad to go through any more detail that y'all would, would like to, like to cover. We really, really appreciate y'all. I mean, I apologize again for not being here.
Uh, we worked it out.
Yeah, I appreciate you.
Any, uh, questions from the commissioners? From Mrs. Conley?
Yeah.
Okay. Mrs. Conley, thank you. Uh, do we need to?
You just accept it.
We're just accepting it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate it, Judge.
Thank you.
You at least get to walk out of here with a lighter box.
Yes, sir. Thank you. Appreciate it.
Yes, sir, Mrs. Conley, thank you. It's good to hear that we're.
Motion.
Motion by Mr. Wilson and second by Mr. Maxwell to accept the audit as presented. Any further discussion or questions? All those in favor would say aye. Oppose, same sign. Uh, number four, consent agenda.
We have some reports coming around.
Okay.
So to start off, Judge, I have the regular minutes of June the 2nd.
Okay.
There is a personnel report. Let me go through these reports real quick. Is there certification?
No revenue.
Two?
No certified revenue.
Okay. Uh, any amendments, thought phones?
No amendments.
There is an investment report for the month of May.
And Christina will have to sign yours when she gets back.
Okay. And then there is a financial report from the Treasury and Auditorium.
Yes, and we need to talk about that for a little bit.
For July the 10th of 2023. And then, oh, I'm going to miss those. On the financial reports, there is a DMV, the tax collector, vote report, sheriff, constable one and two, JP one, two, and four, the JEA. Agrile. Agrile.
From TJN, Amy.
Yes, both of those. And there is non-sets of bills, claims, and accounts. And then I don't have any in my package of open meetings, public information act, cybersecurity, or purchasing acknowledgements.
Oh, I have any. I don't have any in my email.
And I believe that's all of the financials.
Okay.
Sorry, Judge, I forgot to write them down.
No, it's fine.
Kathy, do you have the report folio from April? Yes, that.
We published May.
Top right, date.
April 3rd.
Yes, I see. Does that go underneath the financials?
It's going under the auditor.
Oh, okay.
Treasury report. And if I can explain that, um, the April report did not have the first financial bank management report included in it. So this is just, so you have a copy showing our investments, or the investments covering our funds on deposit. And then on the report of financial condition, uh, May bank recs, I don't have the, um, accounts held by all the offices that they hold themselves in general ledger. And Christina's not had the ability to reconcile May bank statements. She should have that ability as of Friday and, um, so hopefully next meeting we'll, we'll have monthly for you again. But what this is, is just the income statement and it's, it's pretty much what we're used to looking at in net data. And it's showing the original budget, the current budget, month-to-date activity, year-to-date activity, um, and year-to-date activity and encumbrances. So when a purchase order is created, it encumbers, it encumbers expenditures, so, um, that's what that is. And then the remaining budget. And we literally ran this right before court, um, so I've not even looked at it, but I want you to have something to see where we think we are. And again, it's unreconciled.
So what's Tyler telling us about all that?
Um, Tyler is working on things that we're, we're having difficulty with. We finally were able to get budget into the budget system. Um, we need to do some cleanup, we had that printed for y'all, and then I discovered that there are numbers in there that don't need to be in there, so we're going to have to go in and clean that up. But Tyler, we're working with Tyler almost daily, trying to get things done. On our part, we still feel like we weren't trained adequately, um, but everything's working. So we're getting there, we're very close to being where we need to be.
Okay. Is there anything else?
Nope, that's it.
Any questions from the commissioners about the consent agenda?
So, Ms. Loretta, you're saying this is our budget right here and it should be close to what it is right now?
It should be.
Close. It closer or?
It should, it should be accurate.
Yes, ma'am.
Mine probably is, except for the budget adjustment we done right before.
I have not.
And it's not.
Made budget adjustments because as of Friday, I can't do anything in the system. That was my weekend plan, was to do budget adjustments and give you a good, good report. I have a stack of budget adjustments that need to be.
Yeah, that's the only thing, I seen everything else looks pretty close.
Yeah.
Damn, I'm starting on that.
How about you, Mr.?
I just made a spreadsheet out, like, last week, just to try to keep up with what I did have from the end of April. Yeah, these, these figures are pretty close.
How about you?
Other than the adjustments that need to be.
Andy, does yours look?
Other than the adjustments?
Yeah? How about you, Ron?
Yes, sir, it looks pretty good. I was getting worried that we was going to go into the next year.
The only thing.
Not as worried as I.
I bet so. I bet so.
I like those good audit records.
Yeah, don't kid.
Nah, I appreciate that. This insurance is going to be right on mine?
No, I still have to do the proration, so don't worry about the insurance.
Yeah, the only thing I didn't know about was like bills y'all pay for internet.
Utilities.
They're trysty.
Do they, uh?
Water and train.
On your, uh, when you, when you anticipate you're going to be able to do the adjustments?
Well.
Or have the ability to do the adjustments?
They've got to get me where I can, Sonia had to log in and print this report because I couldn't do it this morning. Somehow I lost everything, I can't do anything, so today.
You happen to have that for the sheriff's office and district too?
Mm-hmm. I can.
They leave you out again, Sheriff?
Huh?
They leave you out again?
Do you have parallels loaded?
April has not been able to get it to work, I mean, she's been going back and forth with Tyler and her username login won't work.
Her username and login won't work? Okay.
Yeah, so that's indeed.
Well, and we can print just his budgets, he, I don't know that he wants it.
Let him make fun through all of it.
Yeah.
Give him something to do.
Any other questions from the commissioners other than why Tyler's not working appropriately?
This is close, Judge. You're getting there.
Yeah, I'm, I'm really pleased with, once they got all of our information in there, that it looks good. I'm pleased with that because we tried before and it did not look good.
No, it did.
I'll tell you another problem we got is with.
It's like having the classic Mustang that looks great, I show real.
They got no engine. Don't show any accrual on, um, PTO, it's not keeping up with that. I mean, it, it don't show on the pay history or anywhere where.
I've got that graphed out for Lee County.
Yeah, you sent me a graph.
And we're working on that. Um, we've got to fix some corrections that were done and the corrections didn't.
Yeah, it, it.
Take.
It doesn't show them any history since, I guess, the first pay period?
If you go into ESS and I can't, I'll have to look at it and tell you, uh, you can go and see your history. It does show it, you have to.
It doesn't show any earned.
Okay, it will, it will, there's a, I, I can't remember the name, can you, where you go?
It's pay history.
It's, yeah, and then you have to go to.
There's still like time history on there.
I, I don't.
I, I can't remember the, the actual places where you click.
Yeah.
But I will let you know, and I will send you another, an outdated graph.
Okay. What about pay stubs for the employees?
They can get their pay stubs from ESS, they're always in ESS, and about half. And about half of them are still not going to email addresses, and Kerry Hancock says he can see where they're leaving, they're leaving ESS, they're leaving Tyler.
Yes.
Um.
It shows up in, uh,
the first one, a mine showed up in the junk mail, and then after I opened it up.
Well, not the emails.
The guys aren't getting any, they haven't gotten any.
You can see, you can see each stub, I mean, when you go on, uh, pay history.
Yeah.
Picture.
It, it'll show you each, each stub that they wrote you a check for. It just, it don't, it don't have your, uh, PTO.
Yeah.
Comp time or anything like that, though. But they, but they're not getting any.
Would somebody send me one? If they would just send me a copy of theirs, so that I can look at it and see.
The, uh, the graph that you printed is right, but it's just don't show up on.
Right.
They just can't keep up with it.
If somebody will email me their copy of their email, and let me look at their email, and see where it's, where it's, where it's not right.
Nobody.
Nobody's getting one? Nobody's getting one?
No, because they're outside the courthouse.
I'm getting one, but none, none of my guys are getting it.
Any one but your guys? And Ronnie, no?
No, nobody outside the courthouse is getting it.
Yeah. And, and it has to do with fund and location.
Yeah.
It's all we can figure out.
With the pay stubs?
Yeah.
I'll get mine.
You're in Fund 10. But dispatch, some of them are still not getting hers.
I didn't ask.
Yeah, they're working on it. But they are available. If they just go and look in their pay history, they should be able to pull it up. In ESS.
Yeah, the, uh, pay stubs.
Yeah.
But it just doesn't have the PTO and stuff on it.
And I'll give you, I'll give you directions on that, on how to pull that up in ESS.
As far as getting the, the.
The actual times.
I can't, yeah.
We can see.
I, I, you can't see your employees' times.
You can't. You, is that what you're saying? You can't, can they?
No, they, they, well, there's no, uh, I mean, when we first started, that's the time, the comp time and PTO that they started with. It has taken.
And so it's not showing anything else?
It don't show them accruing anything.
Okay. And I'm sorry, Jason, what?
No, no. I'm just, I did, we have access to that? We can see their comp time?
No.
You should.
You should.
Everybody, we, we're not getting, we're not getting there. And we should, I would think.
We'll print a report for everybody, like we did from Net Data, where everybody knows where their employees are right now.
Okay. Well, her, her graph that she sent me last time was right. If we just go, I guess we could, it's, it's on the word, isn't it?
Yeah, I, I've got an updated one.
I guess we could just add it in each time.
Well, you shouldn't have to do that, though.
I've got an updated one, so I can send that out that's current. So, I'll send those out today.
Okay.
Okay, uh, any other questions or comments about the agenda? Entertainer motion to accrue the consent agenda. Motion by Mr. Crenshaw.
Second.
Second by Mr. Rains. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye. Oppose same sign. Number five, business to, well, we gotta get all this signed. Let's forget all that. I'm gonna do investment report, uh, do it through our. You're gonna do it?
Um, if you wanna talk about it, we do have a CD up for Reno.
James, is there something you wanna talk about on that? Is there something you wanna talk about?
No, I, I just wondered if she was gonna do the investment report.
There you go, that's a whole stack. Did you want to say anything about that CD at this point, or?
We have a CD that actually matured Saturday, um, in the general fund section, the first one, CD ending in 5391. Uh, Christina and I discussed this last week. We have 10 days to redeem it. Um, she's going to check rates. She's on vacation this week, so it probably won't get done till she gets back. I know it won't, and then I'll be on vacation.
You going away?
Going on a cruise.
A cruise? Well, I hope you have fun.
Thank you.
Where you going?
Going on a cruise.
Like Leon.
No. No, I don't get in murky water, so. It's going to be way out there.
I wanna go with you.
Okay.
Have a good.
I'll chill out. Get it, dude. Kathy, you ain't catching none on fire popping your fireworks?
Nothing, this year.
Good for you, girl.
Not this year. Did you catch something on fire last year? I just told him that.
Um, while we're signing, I guess we'll talk about the burn ban. I've, I've texted some of the chiefs, and their concern is, is that, uh, parts of the county didn't get some of the rain that we got last time. And unfortunately, we either, best I can tell, we're either all on a ban, or we're not on a ban. We can't say, well, the north part of the county is, the south part of the county's not, or whatever, so, uh, what's the, what's the pleasure of the court, uh, on the burn ban? Because we're, we're looking at triple digits this entire week.
It's gonna dry.
It don't take long for it to dry, even if it does rain when it's 100.
And for the record, the burn ban was lifted on July the 5th by the judge.
I did. I did.
Probably need to put it back on, boy.
That's what I'm thinking. Anyway, I'll entertain a motion.
I don't think it's gonna rain this week.
It's quickest way to make it rain.
Yeah.
Put it on.
Motion by Mr. Maxwell, second by Mr. Crenshaw, to, uh, reinstate the burn ban. Uh, any further questions?
Effective immediately.
Effective immediately. Um, here and done, all those in favor say aye? Okay, oppose same sign. Hey Shelby, we're putting the burn ban back on.
He's bragging on her, looking.
I'm telling you, I, I may have to put her on full time.
I'm telling you.
Uh, B, 9/11 update and corporate dispatch update. Sheriff? Okay, Center for Life Resources, Dionne White. That's why, thank you for being patient. Well, we have to go through this other stuff. Yeah, if you like.
Thank y'all, be very brief. I won't take very much of your time. And I, congratulations on the county single audit. I've been to other county commissioner meetings, and y'all are doing great, man. That's awesome. Um, just a couple highlights, this last session, you know, it just finished a couple months ago, and there's a big emphasis on behavioral health, mental health, you know, with the Uvalde shooting in the past, we had Santa Fe and El Paso. Um, Governor made some, uh, promises, he made a priority, behavioral health, mental health funding. The end of the day, um, there's just a little opportunity for increased funding for behavioral health, and it's worse for rural Texas. Um, I spent many, many, many hours walking the halls and talking to our state representatives, um, but we're hopeful that there's a little bit of a chance to get some additional funding. Um, with the Uvalde shooting, uh, my counterpart there at that MHMR, he was brand new to the system. He didn't have any MHMR experience. He came from a hospital, and, um, the, the center there, the MHMR building there in Uvalde is right next door to the school. And so, as they start hearing gunshots, and the staff were calling the central office folks, um, uh, in Kerrville, and saying, "We're hearing gunshots." Well, they were thinking, "Ah, just hunters, right, hunting, hunters, don't worry about it." And then they kept hearing the gunshots, and, and then they called again, and, and, and this is all, 'cause I, they called me within two hours of all that starting, 'cause we're just so close to them, um, about like, what do we do? Because the kids started showing up, uh, all bloody and stuff, so. And, and, and my objective at the Capitol was to tell folks, we're too busy being, reacting, we're reacting, we're not being proactive. We need to be proactive to stop some of this stuff from happening, and it shouldn't take school shootings to get stuff done. Uh, we need to be ahead of time. So, there is one bill, that, there's a possibility, it's HB 4467, and it's for populations under 100 or 250,000, and the focus is on to re, is to reduce forensic beds.
I'm sorry, what was that house?
Uh, HB 4467. And, um, and I have the sister bill, the Senate bill, but, um, the goal is to reduce forensic beds. So those beds are being taken by folks who are waiting to be compet, to declare competent, or they don't need to be in the jail, because they need to be in some kind of service. I was in Houston about a month ago, and in the hallway, I had an opportunity to talk to the sheriff of Harris County, and, um, and he, uh, not just to me, but a lot of folks, he'd said that because of the situation Texas is in, Harris County is the largest provider of forensic beds in the state of Texas, the jail, the Harris County Jail is. So this HB 4467 may, um, give us some opportunity to pull down some more funds. I would like to take a, a minute to, uh, thank, uh, Judge Hulam, when he was chief, uh, back in 2019. There was another, uh, bill that was a long shot, and, uh, through, uh, your support and some of the other chiefs at the time, uh, we were able to get funding. So from 2019 through the end of this fiscal year, uh, we've been able to pull down 243,808 directly to Eastland County. So that money is used to pay for mental health deputy, um, which helps. It's not enough, but it's pretty good. It's for, we were very happy to get that, that, out of that time. Um, this fiscal year, we're looking at 62,376 dollars. So that's money that, that we can bill, the MHMR, the Center for Life Resources, we can pull down that money, and then it goes directly to the county to help pay for the health deputy, um, which helps keep folks out of, uh, jail, or out of going to a state hospital. I haven't used a state hospital bed that I'm allocated in at least 11 years. Um, it's, it's completely full. There's no beds in the system, in the state system. There's just none, there's just none. So as default, have to use private psychiatric beds. And so a state hospital bed is around 530 dollars a day, roughly, on average. Uh, private hospital, psychiatric hospital beds, around 700. Um, and the state doesn't give any additional money, but when it's 2 o'clock in the morning, and, you know, we gotta get someone, you know, and when we, and the problem I'm having now is, we send folks, and then when they get there, then the hospitals say, "Nope, we don't want them," and that creates all kinds of problems, so. Now, those are some of the things that we're working on, but I did wanna take a moment to, uh, thank, uh, Judge Hulam, uh, and your leadership back 2019, 'cause we were able to pull down 243,000 dollars, and also sheriff also, uh, when you were back in your other role, uh, back then, so.
So the 62,000 that you're out, that you're pulling down this time is probably for the mental healt, mental health deputy?
Yes, sir.
So, I don't wanna get into the chiefs meeting that I've been invited to, uh, as well, but, uh, so is that, is the sheriff gonna get anybody reassigned to the jail, or?
That's what we're working on now. The, the, the problem we're having now is just staffing. Um, I called this morning on the way up here, and we're 20 positions down, and we've been that way since about 2019, 'cause nobody wants to work. Um, I've given increases, I've increased pay, we pay 100% health insurance, um, we have a daycare, I mean, we do, we're doing everything possible to try and lure people to come work. Um, but from what I understand, it's kinda everywhere, where a lot of folks are just short-staffed, so, um, you know, we had really good prospect here in the county, and then the criminal check didn't do, didn't look good, so we had to start over again, but, uh, but I have some additional for tomorrow's meeting, some additional strategies of short fixes, short-term fixes, until we get, see if we can get this additional money to help with that, so. I got a little team coming tomorrow for that, so.
I'm gonna try to make that meet as well, but I also have, uh, balance that with court, so.
But, but, but that's awesome, we got 200,000 dollars, uh, 'cause a lot of MHMR centers didn't get it. It's very competitive, but, uh, we were able to do that. Um, I also wanna go over the numbers of, did y'all get this? My person who was, her name's Sally, she said that, she sent this, and it was on iPads, but then I'm looking, nobody has an iPad, and so.
Yeah.
Did y'all get that? Okay. 'Cause that's what I'm looking at, is this report. Okay, great. Um, so from 6/1/22 to 5/31/23, we served 682 people, and that's about 4% of the population of the county. Uh, that's a lot of folks. That's a lot of folks. Um, if you look at 100, where it says unit 100 on intake, that's 182 people that came to us for services for the very first time. Um, now, they're not all behavioral health. Some of them have ADD, a diagnosmal retardation, autism, and there may be babies, early childhood intervention, but there was 182. And if you go down to 300, uh, about in the middle of the page, there's 203 folks we served in crisis. Crisis Services was 203 folks within the county who were either suicidal, um, uh, having issues that they had to get resolved immediately, might be family members calling, don't know what to do about their loved one, et cetera. Uh, so we had 203. Our MH Deputy Program, uh, that we were talking about, um, we, uh, we serve 129 folks. Um, and so what that program can do is, if we can see that someone's starting a cycle, like we can tell that there's kinda heading to where they might need to be hospitalized or get in trouble, then we can do an intervention before that happens, and that's what the MH Deputy helps with, is to check on folks, to make sure that, to prevent them, uh, from something bad happening. Uh, med clinic is 181, or psychiatrists. Uh, when I first moved here back in 2010, all the services were being provided out of Brownwood, and, uh, I came from another rural area up in the Panhandle, so we had nine counties up there, and, um, it's important to me that services are provided from within the county, and so down the street, uh, at our office here, we have telehealth, so we have the TV and the psychiatrist, uh, is through the tele, we have our nurses on site, and they do the vitals, et cetera, just like regular clinic. And so we served 181 folks. Uh, ADD Services, which is mental retardation services, uh, we have 76 folks in the county, and our case management, uh, folks are 233 for behavioral health, like bipolar disorders, schizophrenia, major depression. Um, so, um, the, we're very thankful for the funds that you gave last year, which was 4,915 dollars. So if you do the math. So if you do the math and divide that by the 682, it comes to $7.20 per person. So that's a really, really good deal. But the local funds is so vital because I can take that dollar and turn it around and use it to pull down more money. It's a 60-40 match usually on the federal funds. So that's just a real quick synopsis of what we're doing. We're serving more people than ever. When I started, over all the counties, we're serving about 3,000. And now we're at 5,000. So we've increased 2,000 people just in the 10 years that I've been here, so. But I do thank you. I know you have a very difficult job managing everything, especially after COVID, because I don't know that folks are over it yet completely. Any questions?
Any questions for the commissioners from Mr. White?
No.
Okay. Well, Mr. White, I guess we'll see you tomorrow.
Thank you so much.
Good enough. You don't have to sit through the rest of this meeting because I know it's, I know it's sit on the edge of your seat, interesting, but.
Thank you.
You bet. Do we want to go in? Did Christina, did you say Christina's not going to be here?
She is not going to be here, but I have the information on the tablet that she wanted to purchase.
That's the one we're talking about.
Yes. Biz Protect gave her a quote for the tablet, a keyboard, three-year warranty, estimated freight is $2,042.99. And then Carrie said that about $160 to get everything set up on it. So it would be just under $2,300.
This is coming out of the county records preservation fund? I'm assuming there's plenty of money in there?
Yes, there is.
For that deal?
Yes.
I'll make the motion, Mike Burkes.
Motion by Mr. Raines.
I'll say.
Second by Mr. Maxwell. Those in favor, say aye. Opposed, same sign. Sheriff Wager, discuss and consider allowing appointment of reserve deputy?
We're in the preliminary discussions and talk with a guy named Mike Hendricks. He's asked to be reserved and of course, I gotta come ask if I can do another reserve.
How do you spell Hendricks?
H-E-N-D-R-I-K-S.
Thank you.
What's his background?
He's been in law enforcement several years since 1990. Narcotics Task Force background.
Okay.
We're not, we're not there yet. I'm still doing background and all that stuff on him, but. Need permission to proceed?
Motion?
Motion by Mr. Wilson.
Say.
Second by Mr. Maxwell. Those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries.
Thanks.
K F requested waive personnel policy and pay compensation time for overtime for full-time county clerk employees. Ms. Tento.
Yes, I have two employees that I learnt on, what weekend was it? Let me begin with 4th of July weekend. No, on 6/23. Was that on Friday? Yes. About 4 o'clock in the afternoon, I was notified that Tyler Technologies needed someone here Sunday afternoon because that was our weekend of conversion to go live on the 26th. Well, I had already made plans, so two of my employees came up and worked on that Sunday afternoon.
The 25th?
The 25th, yes, sir. And so in order for them not to have comp time, I'm asking that the court pay that out. Normally I would ask to be paid overtime, but it's past the fact now the time she's already been turned in. So I do have some funds available in my part-time line item to be transferred around to those two deputy lines.
I'll make the motion.
I'll say.
Okay, motion by Mr. Raines. Second by Mr. Maxwell. Any further questions? All those in favor, say aye. Opposed, same sign. Motion carries.
Thank you. Probably be back.
Discussing, gee, discussing, consider moving funds from Judges and Clerks Fund to the Voting Equipment Fund. Becky, are you doing that? Or is doing it?
I'm going to help. And it's not fund. Summer did the budget adjustment request before she left. What this is, is on the HAVA funds, the state. And I don't understand why it worked this way, but the state gave us money that we have to pay back. We used it, but we still have to pay it back. So you should all have the budget adjustment request. What she needed to do was to move 5,500 from general fund, elections, judges and clerk to, and that shouldn't be Fund 42, it should be general fund, voting equipment. And I'll, I'll correct yours.
I didn't print it out yet, so if you want to reemail me, I'll replace it.
So they're moving 5,500 from where?
From judges and clerks to voting equipment.
Okay.
And how, how come we're having to pay that back if it was HAVA funds? Because isn't that a grant fund?
Yes. It's, it's just a really weird way of doing it. And I don't understand it, but it's money that we have to give back to the state.
Because it wasn't used.
We had to put up a certain amount or to get another amount and now it's time to pay that.
It's the.
So it wasn't like the first HAVA grant fund?
No.
Okay.
No. No. No, they actually gave us money this time. And then it's, it's just very different.
Becky, do you have any input on that?
I remember when it happened. And I remember that we had to put up a certain amount of money in order to get a bigger amount of money. And then now it's time to pay it all back. But as far as the tiny details, I do not know the tiny details. And I was researching to see, you know, if I could go back and kind of pronounce and everything to it. And I.
It's almost like this is our match. That's the best way I have to explain it.
That's what it sounds like.
And.
So do we not match enough or do we not spend enough?
We have not matched anything. So that's why we're having to basically pay the state that part.
And I remember the meeting where it was agreed that, you know, yes, we'll do this. But as far as what happened in the middle, I can not carry it on right now.
Okay. All right, well. Sorry, I lost my bookmarker. So we still need a vote on that?
Yes.
Yes. And would you also approve payment of that 15,500? Would you sign on there somewhere too?
Okay, I'll entertain a motion to move 5,500 from Judges and Clerks Fund to the Voting Equipment Fund.
I'll make.
Motion by Mr. Raines.
I'll say.
Second by Mr. Crenshaw. Any further discussion of questions? All those in favor, say aye. Opposed, same sign. H, discuss and consider adopt a hazard communication program policy.
You should each have a copy.
Thank you, Becky.
Thank you all very much. Did you email that?
Becky, if you don't, if you hear any more or get any more clarification on that, would you let me know?
I will. I was working on it Friday and I had others.
That's all right. Thank you.
There is a federal mandate that all CDL drivers are entered into a federal clearinghouse. And basically the clearinghouse keeps up with accidents if the license is no longer valid. And part of becoming compliant with that is the county needs to adopt a hazard communication program. And this was a sample policy that was sent to us and we changed the names to Eastland
Sorry, I still got fire chiefs texting me. Just wanted to make sure that we were still keeping the burn bad. So this is mandated by the federal government that our CDL drivers have to be listed in this program?
The federal clearinghouse, yes.
So is there a, they get checked once a year or?
I think it is an ongoing system. I mean, I don't think it's like once a year they check ours. I think they go in this clearinghouse and the information is there.
But if there's something that happens with those CDL drivers, then we get notified?
I have no idea. I can find out, but I just know it's a federal requirement, so we have to comply. We also have the ability to check records through the state, through DPS. So which is our, our easiest way to do it is to just, in the court, sign that contract last meeting, I believe.
Yeah, yeah. Well, that's kind of why I thought this was interconnected, but obviously it's not.
No, I do not believe it's connected with that at all.
It doesn't sound like it. Okay. Entertain a motion to comply with the federal mandate. Motion by Mr. Wilson. Second by Mr. Raines. All those in favor, say aye. Opposed, same sign.
And adopt this program?
And adopt this program per the federal mandate. I wanted to get the federal mandate part in there.
I did not have a signature sheet, so.
Okay. You can give me a copy.
Discussing, consider payroll deductions for employees' use of the 24/7 Health Club. We're not done. Well, we can sign and talk.
Gets too confusing.
Before we start that, Sonya, would you go get Gailea?
She's there.
Sure.
No, don't.
Never mind.
I missed that opportunity.
Yeah, yeah, shucks, you'd have been gone.
Are we on aye?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. Discussing, consider allowing payroll deductions for employees' use of the 24/7 Health Club at Love Oak, so.
I'm actually.
Mr. Wilson, can you get?
Yeah, I may be in on that.
I'm going to let Gailea tell you about this. She made the phone call to Ben McNabb.
Okay.
I called and spoke with owner. They have a corporate rate that they're willing to apply, but it's not really much of a discount. What they did offer was we, they can do it by employee draft, which is what we're wanting. They have to pay the first month upfront.
The employee does?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
There's a first month upfront and then we can start the drafts. What we want is if they agree to do this, that they commit to the full year because that's what the facility has. When they sign on, they agree to a full year of payment contract.
Well, and they'll do month to month for us, but what happens is people join, then they quit, then they join, then they quit, then they join. And it's.
It's a lot of paperwork.
It's a paperwork nightmare. So what we're asking is that if anybody joins in a fiscal year, they stay on it that whole fiscal year. So we just do our changes once.
What is the corporate rate?
Was, hold on, let me get that information. I have it. Let me get it right. Because we did work with it sometime.
How often do we pay the wellness center?
Monthly. Yeah. We deduct from paychecks and then we pay the wellness center what we deduct. So this month, we're deducting for August, August membership. And we'll have to work that out with Love Oak also.
Because they, they basically, they're, I mean, evidently, we're always behind. There's reason I'm saying that.
We are behind right now. We mailed the May deductions last week and we'll mail the June deductions this week. But yes, we don't, it has to be after payroll. And Christina wants to do all the deductions, everything at one time. So that means we have to get all our bills, reconcile everything. So yes, we are usually a couple of weeks behind on paying, but we pay every time.
Well, we're paying it, mate. We're more than two weeks behind.
Well, I know. That's because of the conversion.
We had one payroll in that day and we had one payroll in ESS and it was a nightmare merging everything together. We worked hours and hours to get it resolved.
Okay. How much was the corporate rate?
The basic rate is $25. And then hands rate, which covers the spray tan, the body water, everything. The system they have is $40 per month.
This is working.
Sign me up for spray tan.
You're looking a little pale.
They do me once, I get, I get my $40 worth.
Me, you over and put them out of business, kind of like a buffet, like, oh crap.
Anyways.
Isn't that about what it is for the wellness center?
Well, for one person, it's 25 a month.
At the wellness.
At the wellness center.
Yeah. Well, that's what this is, 25 a month, isn't it?
For the basic, yes.
For the basic, yes, sir. They have, have not been, but I understand there's quite a bit more selection of equipment and availability for the employees to do it within their lunch hour. That's what they like to do.
But this is really no discount because I'm paying this right now outside of payroll.
I think the only concession we would get is.
Tax break.
Not even a tax break, is just the payroll deduction. And then employees wouldn't have to pay themselves. We just do it and pay for them.
Entertain a motion to do the payroll deduction for employees' use of the Love Oak. Motion by Mr. Raines. Second by Mr. Maxwell. All those in favor, say aye. Opposed, same sign. And we'll all sign up. Just let us know what, when spray tan day is. Jason, would you like to go there?
Y'all want to go before I get there?
Can you take one and pass it down?
Thank you so much.
It's like slowing down.
I'm good.
Here we go.
Could you make one for me?
Court said 2024 holidays. This is J. And currently, this is the.
It's exact same number of holidays as we have in 2023.
I'll make the motion to set the sitting.
Okay. Motion by Mr. Raines. Second by Mr. Crenshaw. All those in favor, say aye. Okay, thank you. Motion carries. Do we have any emergency amendments?
No, sir. Could we go back to Bill's claims and accounts, though?
No, we've already considered.
We're done.
We've already done that. Okay, we're going back to Bill's claims and accounts.
For one. Um, for one thing, the court, I didn't hear in the motion to approve payment of the 15,500 to the state. So I need to get permission to actually pay the state. And then I have about $135,000 in invoices from Tyler Technologies that need to be paid. Texas law gives us 30 days to pay from invoice and we are not in compliance with Texas law. And everything that's billed, it's the annual maintenance, which we need to pay. And then it's status billing. So somebody has signed off to Tyler Technologies saying this work was done. So it's not it's not what needs to be done. It is work that's already been done. So I'm asking the court to allow.
It's not additional claims.
Right, right. Asking the court to allow payment of all of the outstanding Tyler Technology bills. And then we'll deal with what's not working.
Can we go back to the first part of the 15,000 to the state? Where was that at?
Oh, we when we were talking about it, I said I needed approval to pay that.
And what is that for? I'm sorry, I missed it.
The 15,500 is for the elections that we just, the amendment was just done.
I thought that was for 5,500.
Well, that is, but we owe the state, I think, 15,500. It's right at 16,000.
And you're just taking.
Moving 5,500.
Yeah, that was just moving moving budget, so there was enough to pay it.
So are we paying the comptroller when you say state?
I believe so.
And it's for the HAVA?
Yes, and if you'll give me just a second, I'll go get the purchase orders and I can give you exact. I'll give you everything.
Judge Holland, you might listen on the holidays. Ronnie was thinking there might have been.
His prayers didn't pass again.
It's a federal holiday.
The June 19th. You know, you and I discussed this, but.
Well.
I mean.
Well, I'll let the court discuss it.
If you want to make amendment, we can do that, but I I did not put it on there. There's a lot of federal holidays that we don't take.
Yeah.
That others do. And actually state holidays too, that.
I just noticed this and then because all the banks were closed.
Yeah, it's like all of a sudden this year, everybody.
Everybody's close to us. We're about overworking ourselves. That's what I was thinking.
Yeah.
The auditorium office has asked me to go ahead and bring it up early. We used to do it till fall because she needs to budget that in the budget workshops.
Right, what happened in 2023 is budget was adopted at 15 holiday days and then.
We had 16.
We had 16, so we're actually going to be over budget for holidays in 2023.
Have you heard of a bill being passed about June 19th being mandated?
I think they made it federal last year.
Yeah. Yeah. But I don't, they can't mandate county holidays.
Texas was taking that day off for years.
Yeah.
It's the state.
And we can always amend them later on.
Not during the fiscal year.
Yeah, no.
Is the court good with us leaving the holidays the way they are?
I'm good with it.
Okay, we'll go from that. What was the invoice amount that we?
So 15,500 to the Office of Secretary of State.
And just call it a HAVA reimbursement?
It is called federal funds reimbursement. Interesting. Is the description.
Okay.
Okay, do we want to take these separately? You guys just want to lop them together?
Ah, we can lop them together, one one motion.
Yeah.
Okay.
Pay both. Secretary of State and Tyler Technologies.
That's your motion?
That'll be it.
Motion by Mr. Raines, second by.
I'll say.
Second by Mr. Crenshaw. All those in favor, say aye. Motion carries to pay Secretary of State and the outstanding Tyler Technologies invoices.
Thank you.
And you did not have an emergency amendment?
No emergency amendments.
Okay, well, that's a good thing. I guess. Okay. Any budget discussion that we need to have with commissioners at this point?
I don't think so. I planned to have the budget today and it didn't work out. I can email it to you or just print it for next meeting, but I won't be here at next meeting.
Do you mind, and I don't I don't want to speak for them, but do you mind going ahead and emailing them that? So they have it just as quick as they can to make any revisions or?
Okay. The only thing I know that I will change is the payment to the state for the 15,500. Summer went ahead and used the election services budget. So I'm going to zero that budget for fiscal year 2024. Now, if we get payment from entities for equipment lease, then that money will go back. Programming and equipment lease goes back into that fund.
On the entity share of that, do they do they normally? When do they normally pay that?
Usually it's.
Two different, you're thinking two different things. You're talking about being part of the joint elections. She's talking about actual borrowing or leasing our equipment to run their own election.
Right, so like school, just those that aren't participating in the in the joint elections.
We charge them.
Okay.
So that comes back in the health purchase equipment.
That's a that's a second.
It's a separate deal, yeah.
Okay, all right.
But the 54,000, Summer usually sends out invoices right at the first of the fiscal year and nobody's good about paying.
And I have a hard change on my software maintenance.
Okay.
It was 4,500 and it's 4,950.
And 403, 010403?
403045700, 4,950.
So change it to 4,950.
And no action by the by the commissioners about the the elections, joint elections deal, we meet or we meet, they will meet on Wednesday and interview the, we only have two candidates. Just information only. We want to entertain one last motion.
I know it's not me.
I'll make the motion to adjourn.
You made a motion to transfer the elections back to the county clerk?
No.
I better I better leave that. Motion, I think, second by Mr. Maxwell. All those in favor, adjourn.
Thank you, gentlemen.